Okay, the January 10, 2018 Prosper Portland Board of Commissioners meeting is convened. Pam, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Plant?
Present.
Commissioner Gambetti?
Present.
Commissioner Moreland-Kapuya?
Here.
Commissioner Myers?
Here.
Chair Cruz?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, first up we'll have Commissioner Reports. We've just been through the holidays, so there may not be a lot, but I'll start with Commissioner Moreland-Kapuya.
That's the report.
Okay.
Happy New Year.
Thank you. Commissioner Myers?
Happy New Year and nothing to report.
Commissioner Plant?
Same, happy 2018.
Commissioner Gambetti?
I had a great holiday, thanks.
Thank you all, and Happy New Year to you too. All right, Executive Director Branham?
Chair Cruz, Commissioners, Happy New Year. I do have a little bit to report because it's been almost two months now since we had our last regular board meeting in November, so I'll go through some of the highlights of things that have been announced and some important events and some staff transitions. So Prosper Portland awarded $1.7 million in community livability grants in five urban renewal areas across the city. We had a really competitive and wonderful selection, I'm sorry, pool of candidates this year, and amongst those selected include Community Kitchen in Gateway, rebuilding Allen Temple, Church Fellowship Hall for community programs in Northeast Portland, improvements to Kelly School Community Grounds in Lentz, support to complete the restoration of the Chinatown Gate in Old Town Chinatown, and I'd like to thank Allison Wicks here at And thanks to all the awardees for their great work in our community. Prosper Portland asked the city auditor to perform an audit of Prosper Portland's income-producing assets this year. And the audit was released November twenty eighth and recommended a couple of things. The first was recommended that we develop a plan for each of our properties and to document our social equity goals for the management of those properties, to regularly review the portfolio of assets, and to update agreements with specific third-party managers and operators. Our asset and investment team had begun working already on some of this, and we had a conversation about some of those changes at our board meeting earlier this fall. But we really appreciate the auditor's thorough review of our income-producing assets, and we believe that the recommendations will bear a lot of fruit. And so we appreciate those recommendations and the good work of the team, Fay and others, who helped to provide the information that was needed and who will be charged with moving forward with implementation. On December first, the Portland Business Journal recognized Prosper Portland's Lentz Commons Project as one of the transformative projects of the year with a twenty seventeen Transformer Award, so we were pleased to receive that for a project that will be mixed income and mixed use out in Lentz. Prosper Portland hosted the Eighth Annual Athletic and Outdoor Industry Celebration on December seventh. It featured the release of a new industry report that talked about the real strength of the athletic and outdoor industry in our region. And there was a partnership with the Oregon Angel Fund where six startups got to pitch. And one of them was selected winner Stacy Goose, she's a founder of a women's workwear company called Tougher, and she has an opportunity to pitch in the Oregon Angel Fund's January meeting for an investment between a hundred thousand and three million dollars. So, great partnership there. Our board met for our annual board retreat on December thirteenth to focus on the year ahead as we kick off the budget process and to seek to figure out how to live into and deliver on our mission and strategic priorities, given some of the opportunities and challenges in front of us. On December fourteenth, I joined members of the Advisory Committee for the Alberta Commons Project to get an early look at Prosper Portland's master leased space in the north end of the building. Kim Moreland had us using Google technology, so we could actually envision what it was going to look like. And the spaces are wonderful. Colas Construction has exceeded the diverse contracting and workforce goals. And so we're really excited to have the official opening and to be able to announce in very short order who will be teneting those spaces. Also in December, community partners selected people to participate on the project working group for the Hill Block. As was announced in August, there will be a process to determine what happens on the Hill Block, which is currently owned by Legacy. And we will be engaging in a community-led, community-centered process. And the project working group will be really stewarding that process along. Dr. Moreland Kapuya will be representing the board on that project working group, and the first meeting will be later this month. So thank you to the selection committee members for their work in calling through really a great list of folks who volunteered to participate on that group. I also want to thank the team of people who helped us get to that point. So Tori Campbell and Lisa Abwaf, Kimberly Moreland, and then Cupid Alexander in the mayor's office, Vicky Gwynn with Legacy Health, and Leslie Goodlow with Portland Housing Bureau. Finally rounding out December, the Jade District purchased their building, the, I'm sorry, the Jade District, which is part of the Neighborhood Prosperity Initiative District Network, allocated more than two hundred thousand dollars of its tax increment finance resources to a project that will hold both the Jade District NPI office as well as a multicultural space. There will be five thousand square feet for this cultural center and reach is, I'm sorry, Rose CDC is developing affordable housing above it. This is at the intersection of Eighty Second and Division. Prosper Portland put in another hundred thousand dollars into that, and so we're really excited to see that community-led project come to fruition. Yesterday I had an opportunity, last night I had an opportunity to have dinner with four of the award winners of Pitch Black, which is put on by Stephen Green, and the dinner was hosted by Accelerate Fund, which is a new technical assistance program to support women founders. And it was a great dinner and really great to hear what they've been up to, some exciting announcements coming forward from those entrepreneurs soon. I also attended a luncheon today to welcome Chief Outlaw to Portland, hosted by the Albina Ministerial Alliance and Scanner Newspaper. It was great to be able to hear a little bit about her plans for Portland. Coming up, there are a lot of events, and so just we'll touch on a few of them. We will be once again sponsoring the Scanner's annual breakfast event honoring the life and works of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. on Monday, January fifteenth. And we'll be able to present a scholarship because of that support. The next meeting of the North Northeast Community Development Initiative Oversight Committee is set for Thursday, January eighteenth, from six to eight PM at Billy Webb's, Billy Webb Elks Lodge. Also on January eighteenth, Prosper Portland, along with NEA, the Oregon Native American Chamber, and the Cooley Boulevard Alliance NPI, will host a celebration of Native American entrepreneurs at Bison Coffee House. There will be three local businesses who will tell their stories of what it means to be an entrepreneur, and you can find more information at our, on our website. And through Prosper Portland's Portland Film Office, we are pleased to partner with Oregon Film, Travel Oregon, Danner Boots on the Outdoor Adventure Film Grant. So we're looking for the selected applicant to create a short film that specifically showcases the spirit, passion, and excitement of the outdoor adventure here in Oregon. We're specifically looking for diverse filmmakers, and applications are open until January thirty first. So you can go to oregonmade.org for more details on the application. So we're excited to see what comes of that. Also pleased to sponsor A Sense Funding, Breaking the Barriers to Capital, Securing Real Capital for Minority-Owned Businesses, which is an event on February second. Couple of other quick events, we released a request for proposals on the ODOT blocks. It's now open, you can find more out about that on our website. And speaking of opportunities, as was announced at their last board meeting, we have put out a request for qualifications for the Broadway Corridor Development Planning Advisory Services and redevelopment of the U.S. Post Office property. We've pushed that back to close on February ninth based on some feedback that we heard. And so we are anticipating that we will have a community open house of a shortlist of candidates in March. Finally, we want, we are continuing to negotiate the terms of a letter of intent with VOES and plan to bring the lease extension and the LOI disposition plan to the February board meeting. All right, so last but not least, we have a new staff member who's joining us. It's actually new, not new, staff member. So Sharon Maras is with us as business analyst for position. It's a one-year position, and we are delighted to have her. She's going to be reviewing, recommending, and helping implement improvements to accounting processes and procedures. And she will be able to hit the ground running because this is not her first time with Prosper Portland. We have counted on her expertise a number of times before. Between two thousand seven and two thousand twelve, she developed agency-wide metrics and led the implementation of portful and related business processes. She also served as the Human Resource and Payroll Project Lead for Dynamics AX Implementation between twenty fourteen and twenty sixteen. So we are delighted that she's with us for a third time and wanted to just say welcome back. Thank you. Okay, great, thank you.
Welcome.
And that, with that, I will end my report.
Great, thank you very much. Great report. All right, next we have approval of the minutes from October twenty fifth, twenty seventeen. Would someone like to make a motion to approve minutes?
So moved.
Do you have a second? All right, all those in favor? All right.
Hi.
Great. And next we have public comment for items not on the agenda. Do we have any public comment? Nope. Okay, thank you. Okay. The meeting of Prosper Portland Board is now adjourned. The members of Prosper Portland Board will now meet as the Prosper Portland Audit Committee to consider accepting and approving the audited financial, excuse me, the audited fiscal year twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. So, thank you. Next, Tony Barnes will join us. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, Executive Director Branham. I'm Tony Barnes, Finance Manager for Prosper Portland. With me are Fiona Earl, Principal Management Auditor with the City's Audit Services Division, and Jim Lanzaratta, Partner with Moss Adams, our independent financial auditors. We're here today to request that you accept and approve the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, or CAFR, for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty seventeen, and accept the communications with those charged with governance for Moss Adams. Prosper Portland's CAFR for twenty sixteen, seventeen satisfies ORS two ninety-seven Municipal Audit Law, which requires municipal corporations undergo an annual audit and subsequently publish financial statements that include the auditor's opinion on the financial condition and results of operations for the period under audit. Additionally, Prosper Portland's charter requires that the agency undergo an annual independent audit by a licensed municipal auditor. I'm pleased to report that the FY twenty seventeen audit went very well. And in a minute, I'll turn it over, the presentation over to Ms. Earl and Mr. Lanzaratta to provide more details about the audit specifics. I'd first like to acknowledge the good work performed by our accounting team on a daily basis, and in particular, in support of the annual financial audit in preparation of the CAFR. In particular, I'd like to thank Catherine Kaminsky, Michelle Whaley, Sam Brigato, Gina Bixby, and Yana Eisemont. Next, Ms. Earl will provide information about the Audit Services Division's role in Prosper Portland's annual financial audit. I'd also like to thank Ms. Earl, the Audit Services Division, and Moss Adams for their services over the last year. But following Ms. Earl, Mr. Lanzaratta will report on the results of the twenty seventeen financial audit. So I'll hand it over to Ms. Earl.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, Director Branham. My name is Fiona Howell-Earl, and I am a Principal Management Auditor in the Office of the City Auditor. I am the Contract Manager for the City's Contract with Moss Adams LLP for the City's and Prosper Portland's Annual Financial Audits. I'd like to introduce briefly the new Director of the Audit's Division, Kari Guy, my boss. Portland City Charter requires the City Auditor to conduct financial audits of the city, including audits of its boards and commissions, and to appoint, coordinate, and monitor the annual audit of the city's financial statements by an independent licensed public accountant. Portland City Code authorizes the Audit Services Division of the Elected City Auditor's Office to contract for the services of certified public accountants to perform the required annual financial audits. The role of the City's Audit Services Division in arranging for and overseeing the execution of the contract for Prosper Portland's Annual Financial Audit provides your financial auditors with increased independence. Moss Adams LLP is not hired by the accountants who produce the financial statements being audited. They are hired by a division of the independently elected Portland City Auditor. This arrangement gives Prosper Portland's audited financial statements greater credibility in the eyes of the public. Last year, I ran the competitive procurement process, which led to the current contract with Moss Adams for three annual audits, and the option for the city to extend the contract for up to two more years. Prosper Portland provided one of the seven evaluators of the bids we received, that was Fay Brown. Your fiscal year two thousand sixteen, seventeen Comprehensive Annual Financial Report is the first to be audited under this contract. Now I'd like to introduce Jim Lanzaratta, CPA and Partner at Moss Adams LLP, to report on your audit.
All right, well, welcome, and our thank you for allowing me to come and finish this process, Chair Cruz and fellow commissioners. It's quite a process to, for your staff to put this document together. You can see the size of it with the fund, various funds that you have, and governmental accounting and reporting is pretty complicated. So it's quite an effort for your staff to close the books, put this document together, and then facilitate our audit. And so just to, do I need to point this anywhere in particular? To the right, over here? There we go. So I'm here just to kind of finalize that process. So I'd like to share with you today a little bit about what it was that you engaged Moss Adams to do. And, you know, I'm very pleased that you have an audit committee that gives us a chance to come in and talk. And a couple of you really put in some time and effort there. And your director has been a part of that process in addition to your finance staff. But we'll talk about some highlights of some things that we covered in detail with your audit committee. And of course, you want to know, well, jeez, what did we find? So what's in our reports? There were some, there are required communications from an auditor anytime we perform an audit. And we've issued you a written letter that summarizes those, so I won't dwell on that. But maybe just verbally hit on just a couple of the items that I think you might be a little more interested in. We did have a couple best practice observations, and again, I won't dwell on that. But just to give you a sense that, you know, we did do a little bit more than the basic audit and had a couple of observations there. And then there are some upcoming accounting standards, and my purpose there is not to teach you about those, but just to kind of keep you apprised of some changes that your staff will be dealing with coming up. So before I do that, obviously, I'm the one that has the pleasure to come before you and deliver the results. But it takes quite a team on our part to get the audit done. So I'm the partner that's responsible for our relationship with the city and Prosper Portland, and ultimately responsible for signing our audit report and making sure that our team has complied with our firm standards as well as professional standards that are applicable here. Keith Simovic was a senior manager that was in charge of the engagement this year. It's been fun to watch him progress in our career, and he's really stepped up with an interest in serving governmental entities. And so I'm glad that he had the opportunity to take that role. He's been involved in the city audit for many years, but a little bit more involved in Prosper Portland. And Mitch is a returning individual on Prosper Portland's job, so he was a key member on our team. And I want to mention Lori Tisch. We have a requirement that when we do an audit, even though I'm responsible and I sign everything, we have a second partner that has to kick the tires on this as well and make sure that I did what I needed to do. So it's part of our quality control requirements within our firm. Lori Tisch serves as the person in charge of our entire firm's governmental, not-for-profit, and regulated industries group. So we're very fortunate to have someone of her expertise as well kicking the tires on our work to make sure we did it right. And then we had three others that were involved, and I don't have their photographs. But just to give you a sense, it's a little bit more than just me here. So what did we do for you? Gosh, there's quite a bit here. I'd probably put your audit into about four very significant facets or functions. I think you have a pretty good understanding of an audit. You know, there's financial information here. You want someone to independently come in and verify that these numbers and the disclosures in here are accurate. And so we come in, we look at source documents, we talk to your staff, we talk to third parties like your banks and the attorneys that do work for you to try to verify the accuracy that. You probably have a pretty good understanding of that. But government audit standards also require that we look at the internal controls. So what are those checks and balances that management uses to make sure that they can report the activity correctly in your financials? And we have an obligation to report to you if there are weaknesses in those controls. So that's a second element. You know, a third element, you're a Oregon municipal corporation, and under state law, the state says, hey, auditors of Oregon MuniCorp, you're going to test compliance with certain state laws. So there's six or seven areas that we look at. There's a couple that are pretty important here. One is budgeting, so that whole public process that you go through in your, putting your budget together, administering the budget. So we look at whether you're complying with those various state laws. A second area that's real critical for you is public purchasing. And the whole public process that you go through when you acquire properties, when you acquire services, are you meeting state laws as well as your own contract review board policies? And there's a number of other areas, cash and investments, there's laws governing that. And then we report on our findings there. So there's a third area. A fourth area is really the technical review. You're fortunate that you've got people on staff that can put this together. You know, there's over fifteen hundred. You know, there's over 1,500 entities that file financial reports with the State Audits Division, and a majority of those are unable to have the technical expertise on staff to do this. So you find auditors putting together the financial statements and then turning around and auditing them. But you're, again, very fortunate to have a crew that has the expertise to do that. So our job is really that technical review and to make sure that this information matches what we audited and fairly reflects that. So there's about four different elements there. So let's talk about, why this doesn't want to work? There we go. Well, I guess before we get to the report, just to give you an area of where we focus, you know, in every audit of a governmental entity, there tends to be specific areas that may be more inherently risky than others, and not that there's any particular issue here at Prosper Portland, but this is where we spent our time. You know, obviously, cash and investments is a sensitive area, and the city holds most of your, of your dollars. And so I imagine from your perspective, you want some, you know, sense that that's all being handled correctly by the city, and you can, in fact, reconcile your books with theirs as to how much of the cash over there really belongs to Prosper Portland as well as the state laws that govern that. So that's an area of focus for us. You know, you issue a lot of loans in the programs that you have, and yours are kind of high-risk loans. You let a lot of those, knowing that you're not going to collect, you know, 100% of that back. It just facilitates the programs that you, that you have here. And so the accounting for that becomes complicated because staff, your staff have to estimate the amount of those loans that you're not going to collect and report an allowance against that. So the reporting in the books is a little bit complicated. So that deserves a little bit of attention. Obviously, you're acquiring property in each of the urban renewal districts to, for your, in your efforts to affect redevelopment, and the accounting for that becomes a little bit complex. It's a lower of cost or market. So as market conditions change, zoning's, zoning changes, other things can impact value, and so we need to determine that management has appropriately captured any value fluctuations that need to be reflected. Tax increment financing, one of your most important funding vehicles that you use, comes with some state laws, comes with some caps. You know, each district, you set kind of a cap that you can issue for debt and that the city issues that debt, sends the money over. But anyway, there's a effort there for us to make sure that for each of those urban renewal districts, you're utilizing the resources that belong to each district and obviously not in, mixing those dollars with the other urban renewal districts and meeting state law requirements. Those Oregon minimum standards, I mentioned the six or seven state laws that were required to test. And we also put quite a bit of emphasis in your IT systems. You know, you can't develop all of this and keep the books without the use of software and hardware and all the security and controls. You know, cybersecurity is a big issue in, in today's world. So a little bit of our work is testing whether there are some issues there that would impact the ability of management to, to maintain accurate financial information. So those are kind of, of all areas where we probably focused our time. So what did we find? Well, I think the cat's a little bit out of the bag, but, so in our financial statement audit, we were able to come to what in technical terms is called an unmodified opinion, and that's what you want, the best you can get. In other words, we didn't have to modify it for any known problems. And I like to call it, in layman's terms, a clean opinion. So that's the best you can get. That's fantastic. So basically, we're saying, based on all the work that we did, we did, we found that management has captured your financial activity materially correct within this document. And also, all the bells and whistles that are required by the accounting standards are in here. On the Oregon minimum standards, no noncompliance findings. And I kind of smile, I mean, obviously, you want, you hope that you have no findings, right? But that's a pretty high mark. What we find is, in local budget laws, generally the area that, where there's noncompliance, the most common variety is an over expenditure somewhere. You know, it's very difficult for management to monitor that, and sometimes a bill slips in in the last month of the year that trips you up and, and sends you over your appropriated budget. We didn't even find any over expenditures. So a very good job on management, on management's part to monitor the budget and make sure we didn't have any violations there, and no violations in any of the other seven or eight state law areas that we tested. So good results. And in the government audit standards, our internal controls, again, we looked at and kicked the tires on the various internal controls utilized here by Prosper Portland, and there were no weaknesses in there of, of the variety that required reporting to you as a governing board. So again, that's, I mean, it's just a great result, and based on a lot of hard work and effort by your staff and under your governance to get to that result. So I know it comes pretty quick. This is when the confetti should come out of the, you know, some balloon should fall because it's a lot of time and effort on a lot of people's part to get to that kind of a report. You know, again, the required communications, a lot of that is boiler, boilerplate, if you will. You have a written letter from us. There's really only a couple on there that I want to bring to your attention. You know, about that fourth bullet point down is when we find an error, if there's a material error and we identify it as a result of our audit work, we call that an audit adjustment, and we did not have any. So we're very pleased to, and obviously, to get a clean opinion and so forth. You would expect that, obviously, we didn't find any audit adjustments there. The other thing that boards kind of like to hear about is, jeez, did we have any disagreements with management? I mean, were they pushing for an accounting treatment that just wasn't right, wasn't in compliance with the standards? Nothing like that happened. Also difficulties. I mean, what you don't want to hear is that, jeez, we were asking questions and the responses were kind of wishy-washy, or that there weren't responses, or we weren't getting information, and we didn't experience anything like that. I think your staff embraced the audit process. Maybe they don't necessarily, wouldn't call it an enjoyment, but they embrace it and they don't shy off, and we haven't experienced any issues. And the inquiries that we made and the information that they need to, to provide us to facilitate the audit occurred in a timely fashion. You know, we have to lay out kind of a timeline. It's a partnership to get this done within the timeframe that we do, and they provided the information according to the timelines that we laid out early on. So that helped us to finish the audit within the timelines that we, that we were seeking. So anyway, those are just a couple of the highlights. The rest are in that letter. You know, anytime we do an audit, we try to add value by, you know, what are our observations? What do we see? And how do you approach things? And maybe how's that different than any of our other clients? And an opportunity to provide some best practices. We issued a written letter, and I think you've been provided that, I believe. And so I won't go into this, but there were maybe four areas that we had some observations and provided some best practice recommendations. And so even though, you know, we, we do like to try to provide you with a little bit of the experience that we have in working in this area, and so this was our opportunity to do that. There we go. And for the new standards, again, it's not, this is not a, an attempt to do a little educational or training piece, but what we like to do is just, you know, alert you to the fact that there are a number of new standards coming down the pike, and you've been pretty supportive of your staff getting the training to stay ahead of these. And we just want to encourage, and hopefully you would continue to provide that support so that they can get the training necessary to stay on top of these new standards. Leases may be an interesting one for you. So anyway, and then also, just a shameless plug, we will be providing some training. So Fiona has been, she's a shrewd negotiator, so in the audit contract, she got a provision in there for some training up to, I think it's six hours. We're going to exceed that. Again, we've done it for a number of years now, and so again, we will provide a day of training up here, and some of that will be in accounting standards. Last year, we did an accounting standards update. We also did a lot of IT-related topics, cybersecurity and, and so forth. Anyway, hopefully you'll be supportive of your staff taking it's free, so we're, we're not charging for that. Again, thanks to Fiona. She's tough, I'm telling you. Anyway, so we look forward to putting that training on. Hopefully, you'll allow some of your staff to come up to the topics that are appropriate for them. Well, hello. I think that was pretty much it, anyway. I guess, one thing I would like, again, a plug for your staff, one of the things that we really enjoy is that when, you know, is clients that want to be collaborative with us. You know, when new standards come down and there's some complexity behind it and questions about how to implement, what we've found is that your staff is very collaborative and ready to reach out. So we get phone calls. The other thing is you have some really interesting transactions that you get involved here, and that adds a little spice for us, so it's really fun. So I get calls from Fay and periodically to help kind of work through some of those unique transactions, and really appreciate that relationship. And I'm, I'm very positive that that will continue through the remainder of our contract. So anyway, thanks to the efforts on your staff's part to facilitate this process, and also for Fiona on management of the contract and monitoring that. Appreciate her efforts to make sure that we're all on board and meeting the timelines. And I guess with that, I would just open it up in case there are some questions that you all have that maybe I didn't cover in, in my presentation.
Thanks very much. Thanks for all your great work. Do you have any questions, Commissioners? No? Okay.
Just real quick, when, when you mentioned that training, is that just for Prosper Portland, or is that a public event that?
Actually, we will open it up. Again, it kind of depends on, you know, Fiona and also Multnomah County worked it into their contract with us as well. And so clearly, the staffs from the city and Multnomah County, and then we're going to incur some pretty significant costs to put it on because of the size of it, and as a result of that, we'd like to open it up to others. And so absolutely, if there's a topic that you would be interested, you're more than welcome to come, by all means. The more the merrier. And so I'm sure that there will be some topics that you might be interested. Last year, like I said, we had a number of IT-related, I mean, the cybersecurity stuff is, although there's some unique governmental applications, there's just in general, it was pretty fascinating stuff. It seemed like the participant response was pretty, pretty favorable, so.
It, it is designed for the governmental accounting staff rather than members of the public.
Can I get one other question for you? You mentioned a little bit the high-risk loans and the loan loss allowance. I'm just curious, is that, how, how that's established and what the standards are for that in terms of setting that allowance? Is that done internally by Prosper Portland's staff, going loan by loan and trying to understand the risk associated with each? Or is there?
Yeah, exactly. And you have a history. So there's a couple things there, and there's some on accounting standards, but most of it is unique to Prosper Portland. The accounting standards are, say, hey, we've got to book an allowance to get to a netbook value that tries to approximate what you believe you will ultimately collect. I mean, if you do it theoretically perfectly, the value you have on here today, the netbook value, is in fact the cash that you will receive in the future. What's unique is that you have different loan programs and you have a different experience as to how much cash ultimately you'll collect out of each of those programs. And so your staff has a history under each one of them, and they, and I believe you do a quarterly, a, a quarterly review of your portfolios to determine if your collections are kind of going as you expected. And so for each of those loan programs, you have a different percentage that you use to do the computation of what the loan loss or that allowance number should be. And, and so the accounting standards doesn't tell you what your policy should be or what the percentage should be. It says, you need to try to estimate ultimately what your loss will be, and you reflect that in the books now so you don't overstate what, 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 what will ultimately then become collectible. Does that help?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Nope? Okay, well, thanks again for your tremendous work. We really appreciate it. I also want to, just before we, before we vote and break, I just want to note a little bit more information here, and especially provide some kudos to Fay Brown and her team, Tony, for everybody who's worked in all these matters. We've had a clean audit for the last five years. We've had clean audit opinions for 16 of the past 20 years. And Prosper Portland or the PDC have received the Government Finance Officers Association Award for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the past 29 years. So pretty impressive work by the accounting staff, and we just want to thank everybody. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you much.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. So I would accept a motion to, well, we have Resolution Number 7260, accepting and approving the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for fiscal year 2016-2017, and accepting in communication with those charged with governance. Would someone like to make a motion to approve that resolution?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Thank you very much. Okay. The Prosper Portland Audit Committee is now adjourned. We will now reconvene as the Prosper Portland Board to consider the remainder of today's agenda. So item number seven is an update on the technology and media industry cluster. Trolls Adrian and Jared Weiner will provide some information. Welcome, gentlemen. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, Executive Director Branham. My name is Trolls Adrian, and I'm the Business and Industry Manager here at Prosper Portland. So I lead the Business and Industry Team, which runs the cluster growth efforts here at our agency. It's a pleasure and a privilege to be here and be able to present this topic to you, which is a really important one in the work that we do to build an equitable economy in the city of Portland. See here? He's just thinking. There we go. To give you a sense of what you're going to hear about for the next few minutes from, from Jared and I, first, I will provide a little bit of an overview of, of what we're doing and, and thinking in terms of our cluster strategy at the moment, where we, where we came from, and why this particular cluster technology and media is so important to our work. After that, Jared Weiner, our cluster liaison for technology and media, will go over our initiatives in that industry, lessons learned, accomplishment and accomplishments, and also some of the next steps that we're looking at. In terms of strategic plan alignment, our cluster work aligns itself best with two of the four pillars in the Prosper Portland Plan. Those related to jobs and partnerships. So jobs, inclusive job creation primarily centered around middle-income, middle-wage jobs, and of course, the creation of 21st century partnerships to solve 21st century And so I thought it may be illustrative and helpful to everybody in the room and those watching from afar to kind of recap what, what is a cluster, what makes it work, what are its components, why, why is it important? This diagram illustrates kind of the reason why I mentioned partnerships in the previous slide, because as you will see from all the various components in an industry cluster, you cannot sufficiently support it without those, without working across industries and without working across silos. The, a cluster is essentially a collection of activities, institutions, people, and companies that sort of congregate around this, the solution to a problem or the creation of a product. And there's a geographic component to it as well. There's a reason why a cluster exists in a particular location, and the confluence of all these factors. all these factors create a competitive industry for a particular place. And Portland is actually a very, very good example of cluster formation, and I will touch upon that briefly in a second. Cluster development work as an economic development practice is essentially nurturing, supporting, assisting, and in certain cases, advocating for the growth of these various components of the ecosystem. And just to go through them real quick, you're talking about, yes, private sector, anchor companies. They're not only major corporations and multinationals. You're also talking about technology leaders, large and small, that have grown within the community, key service providers, which are not necessarily directly producing the product that the cluster produces, but they're key links in the supply chain or key links in the information chain. And you're also talking about sort of the leading startups that are bringing new ideas into the ecosystem. On the infrastructure side, we're not just talking about the physical infrastructure, the road, the rails, the ports, the airports, that sort of create the geography that a cluster exists in. We're also talking about the institutional infrastructure there for the universities, the national, international organizations that may be housed in the community, conferences and trade shows that bring people to the community and develop best practices and share best practices. And then finally, there's talent. That's of course the most important in many ways. You cannot do anything without people. And so sort of the four key components in terms of talent are talent has to be skilled, experienced, diverse, and cosmopolitan to have a successful cluster. And I think the final thing to mention about cluster development and clusters, generally speaking, clusters are traded, meaning they bring dollars into the community from outside through commercial transactions. And that makes them absolutely essential for economic growth through a community because those dollars that are brought in are what essentially fuel the non-traded economy that exists there. By non-traded economy, we mean restaurants, we mean construction companies, we mean healthcare, we mean the professional services that kind of exist to support a local economy. So essentially, without growth in our traded sectors, there is limited impact or limited growth potential for the non-traded sectors. So that's Cluster 101 for everybody. Going to Portland itself, we have identified through our strategic plan five clusters, one of which is non-traded, that is healthcare, that we're currently serving. So, and these are all identified as in terms of the traded clusters, where Portland is truly a globally competitive economy. So these are metals and machinery, which is a subset of the manufacturing industry, primarily around metalworking as well as advanced industrial equipment. And you see here below each cluster on the slide, some of the key activities that are going on within each. Athletic and outdoor apparel, that's obviously, as Executive Director Branham mentioned earlier, that's a very unique one to Portland, where Portland is truly a world leader within the industry. Green cities encompassing a lot of various aspects of what you would call clean tech, sustainability, and some smart cities practices. And then technology and media, which we're talking about today, software development, digital media, technology more broadly speaking. Going back to the concept of anchor companies, I thought it might be helpful to give everyone an idea of what we mean by that. This is really, as you can tell from this slide, you're talking about a very broad spectrum of the economy here. We're not, yes, we're talking about major global brands, and these all, of course, are located here in the city of Portland. These are, some of them are major global brands like eBay and Adidas, Investas, but many of them are homegrown, locally grown companies, and many of them are still fairly small. They are, but they are contributing something very unique to the ecosystem. Our cluster development work, well over half the companies we work on on a daily basis would be considered very small businesses with employment of less than 50. And almost all of the companies that we work with fall under the federal government's definition of a small business, which curiously enough is actually 500 employees or less. One company to call out in particular here, because I think it illustrates well sort of the breadth of all the cluster work that we do, and it is within the technology clusters, Jaguar Land Rover, which is, of course, is originally owned in, by an Indian multinational headquartered in the UK, the business unit, and now with a significant presence here in Portland. They started a few years ago with a single employee here who loved the city so very much that he actually contacted us, got connected with Pam Neal, who runs our green cities cluster, and asked for our assistance in helping pitch internally Portland as a place for expansion for their autonomous vehicle software development work. So Pam and Jared have been working with them over several years now to cement that presence here, and today they have several facilities in the Pearl District employing more than 100 people. What I think is really important about that too, though, is that through that work, they've actually committed to significant support for some of Prosper Portland's key priorities around building an equitable economy. So to give you some examples of that, they're now providing opportunities for entrepreneurs of color, technology entrepreneurs of color, to participate in their world-renowned acceleration program, which is partly based here in Portland. They're hosting several youth interns every year from underrepresented communities, which is very, it's very important to get underrepresented populations into these traded sector clusters. It's a high priority for us. And then they're also committing to some quite substantial inclusive hiring practices to make sure that their workforce as much as possible resembles the demographics of the city of Portland. So this is a really interesting case of how traditional cluster work can lead to equitable economic development outcomes. To give you a sense of the growth of the traded sectors in Portland, as you all will be well aware, the economy here is doing exceedingly well in terms of the top line numbers. And as I mentioned earlier, this comes in great deal from the traded sectors, and we have other traded sectors here, but among the four that we focus on, you can tell right here, the historic job growth in those sectors is quite substantial, metals and machinery being a, being a bit of an exception to that. However, manufacturing in general is retrenching employment-wise in the United States, although profits are high and productivity is relatively high as well. Technology being by far the leader in this. And you will actually see that technology, this year, in 2018, we project that technology will become the largest traded sector in the city of Portland, overtaking metals and machinery. However, we are also well aware that with that growth comes some costs, and I think that's where that all brings us here today. And I want to just give you a little bit of a historic look back as well. The reason why we're focusing on these clusters is that in 2009, then PDC decided that it, in order to bring this city out of the Great Recession, we needed to focus on our strengths. And so you can tell from this slide that this has obviously been a successful, fairly successful effort in terms of top line. However, again, this growth has become somewhat self-reinforcing, and we do need to adapt to the new environment and make sure that it's as inclusive as possible. As a result, our current focus areas on the cluster development side are really along these five pillars. Small business growth, which is almost by default in this city because there are so few large businesses, but we really are committed to the very small businesses and bringing them into the economy. Inclusive workplaces, and you'll hear a lot about that from Jared. Inclusive career pathways, as I mentioned earlier, things like providing opportunities for underrepresented populations to get a foothold in our traded sectors. Cluster-centric international trade and recruitment, essentially meaning when we go abroad to recruit or to attract investment or when we assist companies with exporting their goods, it will be in our clusters. And the same thing goes for our very limited but very strategic domestic recruitment efforts. And then finally, entrepreneurship with a social impact. When we do work with entrepreneurs, we want to make sure that the entrepreneurs are from priority populations or are, their work has an impact on those priority populations within the community. Excuse me, I went a little too far there. On the previous slide there, you'll see a picture, actually, speaking of which, there is an entrepreneur with a, that type of impact. Zapp proved is actually a locally grown company founded by Monica Anand, who was a founder of color, today has a very substantial workforce in the city. We keep those things confidential typically unless we're allowed. A couple of examples of how they engage with us, there are Tech Town Diversity Pledge Signatory, and Jared will of course speak much more about that. And they're also active participants in our other work, broadly speaking, throughout Prosper Portland. Just one example, Chris Bright, who leads our marketing effort, sits on our Budget Advisory Committee this year. So we're very proud of the work that they've done as a company, but we're also very proud of the way we've been able to engage with them for the betterment of the community. There we go. Now, just to give you a sort of a final sense of why this work truly matters, as I mentioned earlier, we're approaching the point at which technology becomes the largest traded sector in the city of Portland. And here you see on this chart a comparison with two different metrics, 10-year technology industry growth between 2006 and 2016, as well as median home price increase for Portland Metro as well as two of our peer or comparison cities, Seattle and San Francisco. We are in the cycle a few years behind San Francisco and Seattle, which I believe buys us crucial time. And as you can see above, home price increases and growth in the technology industry historically over the past 10 years anywhere in the United States have tended to go together. Because again, this industry is poised to become the largest in the city, I think it goes without saying that we will need to blaze a new path for broadly shared prosperity if we are to achieve the goal of building an equitable economy. So Tech Town and the Diversity Pledge is really the first important step on this path as we try to ensure that Portland does not go the place that other places went with displacement effects and gentrification effects that ensue. And so Jared is now ready to take you through the incredibly impressive effort in Tech Town and very, very unique effort and where we plan to go from there. So thank you so much for your attention.
Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, Executive Director Branham, and members of the audience here in person as well as those watching on YouTube near and far. I'm Jared Weiner. I lead our cluster work with the technology and media sector. I'll share the work that we do in sort of three ways. I'll talk, I'll give a bit of a historical context for the work that we've been doing with the cluster. And as Trolls mentioned, that's really sort of when we talk about like actual direct impacts and engagement with that work really began in 2009, when we had someone devoted specifically to that one cluster. Also share a bit about where we are today and the work that's being done there, and then also look forward about what's next with the work. So there are significant differences in the goals and outcomes we hope to achieve with our work today than those in the past, but the overarching approach is the same. At the core, we work with the cluster, and the idea is really focused around being responsive to the needs of the industry and having flexibility in addressing their needs when challenges do arise. That's really the core tenet of how we work with the industry. And what we're able to do today around our work about building an inclusive economy really is based on the trust and the work that we've done with them, with the industry members in times past. And that's really sort of building relationships, having face-to-face meetings with the industry members, and really listening and understanding the needs that they have before we take action. Additionally, we bring a lot of value as an organization to this work. We're uniquely positioned as an institution to lead a number of the efforts. As Trolls mentioned, this industry has grown rapidly, but it's also an indication that the industry was relatively small in the not-too-distant past. Us as an institution that's been around for a number of years brings legitimacy and stability to the efforts that we're trying to achieve. And then as we look forward, we'll be identifying challenges and trends, and that's something unique again that our agency has, that we can look beyond sort of the next quarter and the profit margins that businesses are often hamstrung by, and we can look out, you know, to a number of years into the future so that we can ensure that the interventions that we're enacting today address not just the needs today, but the needs of the future as well. So at the top of that slide, it looks like it's, yeah. So what we're working on today is how to increase workforce diversity and workplace inclusion to build more profitable companies and more equitable economy. Tech guys have in trouble with the technology. So when our cluster work began back in 2009, it was the sort of core focus of our work as an agency was growth and competitiveness. And as you've seen in some of the charts previously, this really was an emerging industry. It was defined at that time largely, at least the Portland economy, by the Great Recession and the impacts that the city was facing with that. And then within the tech industry, we understood that there was huge potential in the industry, but the growth and the existence of one in the city of Portland was very small. And just for context, you know, the state of the industry at the time, when you look at tech back in 2009, that was a point when, that was the year when the iPhone 3S was released, which for the next two years was still only available on AT&amp;T. So it's easy to forget about what has changed in this world, but change does happen very rapidly. And within Portland, we've been positioned very strongly for that. Both our proximity to the Bay Area and Seattle gives us access to not just talent, but also a location for companies to expand into. Oftentimes, what we've seen is, you know, companies will come and expand here, people really like Portland, and they'll build their own businesses here, and that's sort of one of the indicators that we've seen in this growing economy. And then also, the quality of place here in Portland is a really big factor in the growth of this industry, and it's for two reasons. You know, the urban amenities are very attractive to a large portion of the talent pool that these industries are attracting, and talent is one of the largest, if not the largest, capital costs that they face. And then two, sort of what we've seen since 2009 is the need for space within these companies has decreased on a per capita basis. So companies need less space per employee, and that's largely based on the fact that a lot of the technology infrastructure is no longer housed in-house onsite, it's housed on the cloud. So that makes, even though there's higher rents and Portland's not as affordable as our suburban communities, it makes that cost differential less. And so, you know, Portland Tech has really been able to take advantage of those two aspects to sort of fuel the growth. And those are, you know, those are, a lot of folks, a lot of my colleagues here have helped and worked to make Portland a great place, and a lot of our bureau colleagues as well. So all those are contributing factors to the growth in this industry. And you see that this growth is happening in Portland proper at a much higher rate than the region and then even in the United States as a whole. So what has, what we've actually done to help facilitate that growth is really tried to address three of the problems that the industry has been faced with even as it grows. Those issues are access to capital, their mentorship for first-time entrepreneurs. A lot of people in this industry haven't run businesses before, and it's, there's a learning curve that comes with that. And then the third one is the availability of talent. And so we've worked to develop three programs since 2009 to address those pain points. The Portland Seed Fund, although it's not specifically and exclusively focused on tech companies, because tech companies are so capital efficient, the vast majority of their investments are in tech companies. And that's an early-stage fund right there, so it's sort of getting companies from idea to actually a business, if you want to think about it that way. Portland 100, the goal of that program was to grow 100 Portland-based companies to $100 million or more in revenue, and that program really focused on sort of follow-on capital, if you will. So we took five companies to the Bay Area to meet with venture capitalists there. It's a pretty common thing where It's a pretty common thing where companies are able to get their initial round of funding in Portland, but then they oftentimes have to go elsewhere to get follow-on investment. And then the second piece of that is we put together, we did a matchmaking with entrepreneurs, the founders of those companies, and established mentors, and facilitated those interactions as well. And then the final program is a program that's actually still in existence today, although it looks very different than its original function and the original purpose of it. So, Tech Town Portland came together, it really was sort of coalesced because we had built that trust with the industry. So, a local founder at the time, Sam Blackman, who's also CEO of Elemental Technologies, came to us with a problem that he faced and a number of his colleagues in the industry faced, which was when they were trying to attract talent from outside of Portland, they could sell the prospective employee on their company. What they had a harder time selling them on was the prospect of relocating and building a tech, their career in Portland. And so, that was, that was really more of a marketing and an information thing. People just weren't aware. It wasn't that we had to start new businesses, it was that they just weren't aware that they were here. So, the initial effort really centered around a public-private partnership and true meaning from everything to coordination, which we did do the bulk of, to actually funding the project. And what we did was we showcased 10 offices of Portland tech companies to show that there was a community here. That effort was very successful. What we layered on both a web presence and a social media campaign on top of that, and then also did a second video, not to duplicate the original one, but to complement it and tell the story of five people that relocated to Portland to build their tech careers at the company. So, that's sort of how Tech Town came about. And that second video launched in 2015, and that was a really interesting time, both in Portland, in Portland Tech, and then in the larger tech industry as a whole. From our perspective, you know, we had more than recovered from the Great Recession as a city. The industry, the tech industry had grown by leaps and bounds beyond the levels that it was at that point. But we also were noticing that the wealth and the employment that was being generated was largely centered on populations that were not diverse. There was huge inequities in who was benefiting from that economy. And within tech, there, that existed as well, and it is an industry that's predominantly white and predominantly male, and it lives in a city that is one of the least diverse cities in the United States. But with that in mind, we knew we had a problem here as the Economic Development Agency, and we had those, we have those relationships with the industry. So, we put together a couple of listening sessions, we shared our perspective and heard what industry had to say, and essentially said, "This is a problem that we face as a city," and they responded that this is a problem that they face as companies. And ultimately, what we, what we did with that work is led to a public pronouncement that is today the Tech Town Portland Diversity Pledge. And that really does speak to one of the values that Portland Tech has when we compare it to other communities, which is the willingness to come together and work together on challenges. And so, that's the work that we're working to do with the industry. So, that's sort of how we got to the point that we are at today. So, the willingness to work together certainly contributed to the ability to institute the pledge. But these are businesses, and the issue of access to talent is what impacts their bottom line. And these data points on the left of the screen point to the talent shortfall in this industry, both in Portland with the number of open jobs in the tech sector, the estimate at the national level and where that number is going to go in the not-too-distant future. So, the availability of talent is a clear business problem for this industry. And at the same time, what you're seeing, and I know you've seen these charts previously, is that the population, even in Portland, which is one of the whitest cities in the country, is looking, is diversifying at a substantial rate. But these only point to one side of the coin as well. This only points to the diversity challenges that affect the workforce. When companies are actually able to diversify, they need to ensure that their workplace is inclusive. And as one of the CEOs that we work with pointed out, hiring diverse talent isn't easy, but it's much easier than the retention issue, and retention and inclusion are certainly So, but by the same side of that coin, when you look at the issue and the challenges associated with retention, it's also the more important issue that affects these businesses. Retention rates mean lower turnover, they mean lower operational costs for the business, and it also ensures that a workplace culture is, has a sense of belonging where everyone can be more productive as well. So, Tech Town is helping companies do that. And before I get into exactly how we're doing that, I wanted to share who those companies are. I know it's a little difficult to read on the screen. This is a screenshot from the techtownportland.com website, and these are the companies that are participating in the effort, as well as ourselves as a managing organization and those that are supporting it. A point I wanted to raise with this is each of these different entities play a critical role in it. The companies are the ones that are doing, that are executing on this strategy and this work. They're the ones that are hiring, they're the ones that are building their workplace culture. We're providing the support for that, we're providing the convening, and we're providing resources to help facilitate that. And then the support organizations are the ones that are helping develop the talent. They're supporting new entrepreneurs in this sector, and they're also the largest, they're also the largest trade group in this industry sector in this region. So, we've, since this effort started two and a half years ago, we've made a number of process improvements with the effort. Bullet number one points to, I know you just got finished with the audit at Prosper Portland, but we did sort of less of a financial audit and more of a programmatic audit of this back in 2017. This image is from a session that we brought folks together from the community and heard their perspective on tech, as well as brought together a number of representatives from the company. So, we had that audit, if you will, from an external consultant. Some of the other things, again, these are more on the process side of what we've been able to do, is we've built out the use of data and how we use that to tell stories as well as make our decisions within this industry. We've also put together and convened an advisory council, which is made up of members of these companies, and they're making decisions that are, that allow their companies to become more diverse and more inclusive. So, instead of us sitting in an ivory tower trying to come up with solutions, they're the ones that are driving and helping us make, make decisions that will actually have, be able to be implemented successfully. And then we've refocused the effort. There's not many people out there that will say diversity and inclusion is a bad thing, but the pain point that we've seen is that we need to focus on the companies and give them the ability to not just have good intentions, but actually take good actions as well. And so, that's sort of where our effort has been focused and been refined. And then we've also brought people together in person more successfully as well. So, that final piece is really important. You know, the tech industry, you would think that there's a number of tech solutions that can help solve this, but the value of person-to-person communication cannot be discounted when it comes to this. So, on the progress side, we've begun the efforts to bring in additional companies to this effort. The images at the bottom, the bottom two images here are images from the 4K for Charity Fund Run, which Prosper Portland has been a sponsor since it was brought to Portland, and that event is put together by AWS Elemental. I think you'll hear more about that later. We've also, I mentioned our web presence earlier. We initially, when we started the work around diversity, we tried to repurpose sort of the existing function and include it with all the other work we were doing. We found really quickly that created a lot of confusion, and having this as the central core sort of of what that web presence is and what our social media presence is, has allowed us to be more successful with this. We've partnered with our regional workforce boards as well to launch a regional talent strategy plan. The plan is focused on people, access, and jobs, but through our work with it and the work of the companies that have been part of the Diversity Pledge, the entire plan is focused around how to bring in more diverse talent and build more inclusive cultures. We've also endorsed four programs to expand the diverse talent pipeline. These programs didn't exist two and a half years ago when the Diversity Pledge launched. I'm not saying that the pledge was the driving force in creating them, but it's something that we've been able to leverage in the work that we've done. So, these programs are every, there's one program focused on bringing diverse talent into Portland. There's three programs focused on building diverse talent pipelines within our local market. One of those, the Emerging Leaders Internship Program, you'll hear more about. It's a program also that Prosper Portland participated in and has had a lot of success with, and the person that's worked with us through that program has also been instrumental in our work with the Tech Town effort as well. We've also provided direct service to companies where we've supported the training of more than 300 people. And then there's, of course, companies are doing their things as well to implement because they have their own unique work cultures and environments. And so, that's progress at a high level, but the pledge, when it launched in 2015 and today, it hasn't changed, but there's five actions in it. I won't read through these, but I will sort of point out where progress has been made within the context of this. Commissioner Myers, I know you're a big supporter of Portland Youth Builders. We partnered with them, as well as three other community groups, to raise the awareness within these communities on access to tech and then also build some skills with people. They were a great partner we worked with on that. I mentioned some of the progress made on the next two bullets in my previous comments. So, around building the pipeline and hiring strategies, there's four programs that we work with. Emerging Leaders Internship, Launch Code, there's the Collaborative Sourcing Model to bring in diverse talent, and then there's also a program called Future Tech. Each of the pledge companies is committed to working with at least one of those programs, and, you know, these programs are all new, so it's, you know, finding out what's working and helping these institutions be more successful as well. I mentioned the training that we've done as well. And then on the internal development and progression programs, I know a number of companies have taken, have instituted efforts. That's not something that we've done a lot collectively on, but it's one of the things that we'll sort of focus on through our efforts to build a more inclusive industry this year. And then the final point on share collective data. Chair Cruz, you led a discussion back in 2016 when we launched the first data report through this effort. We've done a second one now, and we'll have a third release that's targeted for June 20th of this year. And so, these efforts are all working towards increasing diversity and inclusion, but because we are collecting the data, we have information, we have metrics to show where progress is occurring. So, on the top one, companies that are part of Tech Town are growing at a substantially higher rate than the industry as a whole in this region. Also, they are hiring at higher rates women, people of color, and people from populations that are historically marginalized. Still certainly a lot of work to do with this, but that's occurring. On the inclusion side of the equation, 84% of people at these companies feel they are supported. That number's extremely high, it's high for all demographic groups. I will say that one of the areas for improvement is that you see lower numbers largely along gender lines, with women of color reporting the lowest sense that they believe that their company supports them. So, we've had a number of accomplishments and a number of lessons learned. Number one, Prosper Portland needs to be an active participant in achieving the outcomes that we're trying to achieve. There's just really no other organization out there to support it in the same way that we can. On the prioritization, this really points to sort of the fundamental core of our cluster strategy. Having only four clusters allows us and our staff to focus on our efforts. It's really paramount in this effort as well. You oftentimes, we oftentimes get questions about whether we're focused on attracting or retaining talent. In that case, I would say it's both. When, we also get the question of are we focused and should we be focused on building the pipeline or focusing on the present sense? I think our role in this is one small piece of the puzzle, and our focus as the Economic Development Agency really means that we should be focused more in the present sense, building those pipelines, while also focusing sort of more from the community sense on how we can build awareness and access to the industry. I don't think we necessarily have a direct role in playing on, you know, the pipeline. There are a number of companies that are interested in connecting at the high school and college level. We help facilitate that, but we're not sort of focused on the younger age generation with this. Certainly, the importance of partners are, is crucial in this effort. It takes a ton of time to build those, but it's essential, particularly because this effort lives well beyond the walls of Prosper Portland. And then we're constantly improving. This is something that when we launched in 2015, there was no other city that had done a public pledge and worked with companies on doing it and also providing support to it. So, we're sort of out there a little bit on our own in doing this as well, so continuing to improve the core function of what we're trying to achieve. And that ties in well to enhancing the value proposition. So, as we do that, we're sort of to the point now where we're looking to scale the effort. And again, I mentioned the face-to-face connections previously. So, next steps. If I were to summarize this, it's really focused on grow, grow, grow. We're at a critical juncture for this effort, both growing it within the tech industry, growing the support services so companies can be more successful in this effort, and then also growing it so that we can achieve similar outcomes in our other traded sector clusters, the other drivers of the Portland economy. The data to the right, probably, you can't make it out in a lot of detail. What that, I have that there is to show that we really are using a data-centered approach to this. Like, we have data, we have transparency in that, and that's something we're also looking at expanding in the coming years. So, those were the next steps within Prosper Portland. There's also sort of next steps at the industry level. The first two bullets really point towards where we, where we look towards the growth. And then the third one is more on the outcome side of what we're trying to achieve. We're trying to prove that this helps the bottom line of companies, and once we achieve that vision, we'll get to this effort to where it needs to be, sort of at a core within these businesses. So, with that, I wanted to thank you for your time and allowing us to share this important work for the city, and we welcome any questions that you have.
Okay.
I'll jump in and go first. Thank you very much. It was very informative. Tech and media has the lowest percentage of middle-wage job creation, even though it's the fastest-growing. Is there anything that we've looked at as for policy to encourage a balance of that? So, it's not the... So it's not the largest creation of maybe entry level rather than, so we're encouraging more growth of the middle wage?
Yeah, so the way we define middle wage is that it's less than a college degree for the industry. So there are a number of junior level, but it is a problem that faces the industry as a whole where they are looking for middle or higher or senior level talent. But I will say there's a number of organizations that have been popping up that are sort of go beyond the traditional approach to access to the industry, and a few of our partners are doing that. A few that I've mentioned are Launch Code is one of the diversity, the programs that is out there that is an apprenticeship model where it's trying to build access through non-traditional routes. There's also other things and partners that we work with. So Treehouse is one of our local tech companies. They're based on the belief that anyone can learn to code and they don't need a college degree to do so. And then there's a couple of code schools that are partners with us on this effort. It's a whole mindset. Industry's at different places on where it stands, but there is, there are now programs out there to support that.
And then POIC would be another one to reach out to as well as Portland Youth Builders on what we were talking about or what you've mentioned.
Yeah. Great. Thank you again. That's very informative. I appreciate the overview. I have a number of questions and some comments and suggestions for consideration. First, just some points of clarification, maybe some data we can get at a later time. Of the new tech jobs that have been filled or created over the last 10 years and projected to be created and filled, in the historical data, how many of those are actually filled by homegrown talent, so to speak, and how much are recruits or transplants? I think it would be interesting to know that because when we talk about pipeline development, of course, we're talking about a local pipeline if we're going to have an impact on our communities and particularly communities of color, disadvantaged communities. And also how many of the new minority hires themselves are from here or from abroad? So it'd be good to know that, just to get a snapshot of where we are right now. And then in terms of better understanding the tech ecosystem, you mentioned a lot of key service providers, right? It's not just the new software startup, it's a series of other service providers that feed into the growth of these companies. Again, not coming from the tech world, it'd be good to know who they are, right? And so, and, you know, maybe it's as simple as janitorial companies, right? But as companies scale and grow, they absorb and a lot of additional jobs and create their own ecosystems. And so, you know, Nike, I think, is responsible for employing probably at least half of the design firms in town, right? So I'd like to understand a little bit more where that growth is supporting the growth of the ecosystem and particularly those middle wage jobs. They don't necessarily have to be in tech, but if tech is helping drive the creation of those middle wage jobs in other industries or ancillary industries, that'd be good to know. I'm also curious, just a point of clarification, what you mean by cosmopolitan? It's kind of in the cluster strategy. You mentioned that was one of the criteria that was used in defining talent. So I'm curious, by that, do you mean just drawing from anywhere in the world or is that the?
Sure. The, sure. That obviously is a term that has different definitions. In this context, I would define it as talent with a global outlook and with readiness for doing business globally.
Okay.
These are traded clusters, traded sectors, and so by nature, you need to be able to interact globally almost in any position.
Great. Thank you. And then a last comment and most important one from my point of view. It is, there's no doubt that what's happened with Seattle and San Francisco is, could be our future, right? Particularly with respect to housing prices. And I'm curious about the opportunity to work with the tech community in creating some kind of financial vehicle, a fund, if you will, specifically to support education and that pipeline development. Because it may not necessarily be the purview of Prosper Portland to get involved too upstream with that kind of stuff. But I think asking tep companies to recognize the fact that unintentionally, you know, the growth of tech industry is driving, is effectively a tax on the cost of living for the rest of us. So I do think some financial contributions are, should be on the table. And lastly, it would be good to know more about the educational partnerships that these tech companies have with our existing universities. Obviously, if we're looking to replicate the kind of dynamism you find in Seattle and in San Francisco, no disrespect to our local universities, but they're not on the par of Stanford or Berkeley or UW. So I'm curious to know, again, what kind of support can be provided in cooperation with our local educational institutions? And it would be helpful for me as a freshman commissioner to better understand also what kind of timeline you're looking at. I think in 10- and 15-year timelines, because that's the kind of timeline we're looking at with the new budget, the big pivot the organization is looking at. So I think it'd be helpful to frame your work in that same context. Thank you again.
Can I ever see the light on this? Yeah, I wanted to piggyback on some of the comments you made, particularly with regards to education. And I just wanted to point out, I had never, I have not seen that, you had a chart up there showing the diversity of the Portland population, which was what I expected, but I hadn't seen the school-aged children graphic that basically shows about a 50-50 divide of white and minority, which I think is exciting and encouraging and presents tremendous opportunities with the work that this organization is doing. So that was encouraging. And related to that, just to share sort of from my personal experience in terms of my family's experience with the schools here, and you talked a lot about building the diverse pipeline, and at the very end, I've been building up my question, and at the very end, you started talking about how the focus of Prosper Portland is more, and the initiatives you guys are doing is more on post-secondary recruitment and building the pipeline that way, if I understood correctly. And I think, I mean, there's obviously a lot of interest now in STEM and trying to attract women into the field and needing to capture them early in order to have a pipeline to work with, right? To build that pipeline. My kids go to a school in southeast, an elementary school in southeast that has been a Title One school, very diverse, and it's just been interesting. Our family's been involved in, for instance, the Lego Robotics and have gone to then the regional competitions where you see the different schools come together. And the inequity that you see in that experience is pretty remarkable. It actually makes me kind of emotional. The more privileged schools have tremendous resources to draw from. And even though there's efforts made out there and there's some resources available now, you see tremendous inequity in what the lower-income and minority schools are able to bring to those regional competitions. And it's a missed opportunity, I think, if we don't focus on that in trying to attract these kids at a young age. So I guess, and I'm not saying that that's necessarily Prosper Portland's focus, there's limited resources for the organization, but I think in terms of a broad approach to how to build this industry and attract truly diverse local population, I think that's critical. And so I think exploring that side of the equation, and again, not necessarily that Prosper Portland needs to do it, but planting the seeds and encouraging that effort in the broader context, I think is really essential. So anyway, I just kind of wanted to share that and make that recommendation.
Well, I can actually speak to some of that if I may, Chair Cruz. So on the business and industry team, one of our portfolio items is also the work on public benefit agreements related to the Enterprise Zone program. And in that, in that work, we have already had discussions with all five school systems in the city of Portland around partnerships flowing through some of those agreements. So business-toeducational partnerships, where and when they make sense to the company and to the schools. So while we're certainly still in a nascent stage there, we see that need, we see the value, and we see frankly the importance of it. So I appreciate that comment very much, and we will continue down that path.
Can I add to that? Just, sorry, go ahead, Commissioner.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, to add to that, actually, one of my missed notes was with respect to getting the industry's help in defining an appropriate or an age-appropriate STEM and tech curriculum as a stepping stone, right? Again, we may not have the resources nor it's not incumbent necessarily adjust on us to fund that pipeline, that 10- to 15-year pipeline where, you know, you would identify a young Latina from a minority community with math talent, right? What steps, what's the critical path, right, for her to get to that tech job, right, graduating from college? And what would a company look at in terms of saying, okay, I want you to know this at this age, and this at this age, and this at this age? And I know tech's a very dynamic field that changes over time, but my exposure through friends who are in the tech community has told me that the big companies out there are looking at this. They're already trying to figure it out, right? Their own analysis and hiring and algorithms are trying to suss all of this out. So if we can, if we can assist in that, please let us know. Because I think that's, that would be helpful for our partnership organizations, including, for example, I'm the chair of the board of Ascienda CDC, which is low-income housing developer mainly for the Latino community in Coli, and we're talking about this. And we're recruiting on our board people with some knowledge of this area. And so again, finding those partnerships, using Prosper Portland as a nexus and as a convener is all for the better. So please give us as much information as you have, and we'll ask a lot of questions in return.
If I could make one quick comment to that, I would say, you know, when we talk about like the ask that we could use from the commission, we could always use more money, but that's, I'm not up here to ask for that. But your network is extremely important, and we've gotten this effort to the point where we feel like we can effectively scale it, and we would certainly could use your support both within the tech community and beyond, because it really does take the entire city to help make this effort more successful. So we'd certainly love to call upon you for that help.
Thank you. And sorry, one last thing. I do think it would be also helpful in communicating this at the level, say, of an Ascienda or another organization, if there was a vision that came from the tech world stakeholders saying, this is how we want to be different, right? Everyone knows what's happened in Seattle and San Francisco, and there are huge benefits to the local and national economy for that, but also downsides, right? So how do we want to be different? What does that look like 10, 15 years down the road? And that would be really helpful for those who, again, who are maybe coming from other outside industries, don't have as much familiarity with ecosystem, but could see, okay, yeah, I can buy into that, right? So that would be really helpful.
Thank you for the comments. No further.
Can I just add to Commissioner Gambetti's comment? You know, I think one of the things that, I think, we wholeheartedly agree that it's a both and, we need to be supporting STEM at a really early age and connecting people today. I think what I've seen personally, and so I'll just speak from personal experience, is that in a policy environment and in a public environment, there's a lot of focus on the pipeline. And it can be, it can be the easier place to go because it assumes that if people just had the talent, they could enter the workforce. And I think that sometimes that is the case, that there's a talent gap, but oftentimes there's relationship gaps or the culture is really not inviting. And so part of what I think we've been trying to innovate is doing some of the work with companies to change the culture today because there's people who are graduating with software engineering degrees, who are diverse from OSU, who don't want to come work in Portland firms, or who, you know, don't have the networks to do that. So we're going to hear from, for some companies today who are trying to, I think, really close that and to make them, make their hiring practices more equitable and to make their companies more inclusive. That feels like a place that not, that no other public institutions are kind of engaging right now, and it's come from the CEOs themselves. So it is a little bit of a unique role that we've been trying to support, but it's certainly in concert with all of the other efforts that need to be increased enormously as well, if that makes sense.
Great. Well, thanks very much. This has been a great discussion, very informative. I have a few comments, but I think I'll defer them for later. And we have several speakers, so I think we'll go ahead and call them up. But Trolls and Jared, thanks very much for a really great presentation. Thank you. All right, so we have three speakers along the same topic. Nancy Garcia from AWS Elemental, Teresa Gelderks from Technology Association of Oregon, and Ryan Buchanan from EROY. So thanks very much to the three of you for joining us. We appreciate your time, and sorry we're running a little bit late, but really appreciate your patience. So thanks for coming today.
Oh, you want me to start? Okay. Great. Thanks for having us here. We all work together in different capacities. Nancy and I are on the Tech Town Exec Council. So my name's Ryan Buchanan. I am founder and CEO of a tech company, a digital marketing company that is across the street. And we're about 65 employees. The name of the company is EROY, or E-R-O-Y. I'm going to tell a two-minute story that's going to connect a bunch of things, so I'll hopefully kind of paint a picture for all of you of what's the momentum that's been happening in the past couple of years. About two years ago, I was at a Portland business event where there are 90 business owners in the room. And for whatever reason, when I looked around the room and I saw that 85 of us were white guys, two other folks of color in the room, and three women as business owners, and this was like a marquee event, it struck me as something needed to change. And not only that, that I was part of the problem, because I've been in Portland for 22 years and been doing a lot of networking and helped to build my business by all the relational connective tissue that I have built. And yet, I, my own company, we, from a gender perspective, we were about 60% women, 40% men, but from a racial diversity perspective, I was not doing anything intentional, and it showed. Like, the fact was that we had about 10% folks of color as employees in our company. So I set out to do something about that, and so I co-founded a program called Emerging Leaders Internship, partnered with a nonprofit that had been doing a lot of work in college scholarships. And that was just two years ago. And then at the same time, there are conversations happening and joined Tech Town Diversity Pledge and things like that. But ultimately, how that program was able to now place 87 interns of color, so some of our most talented, you asked about whether or not we're recruiting people from outside the region or if it's homegrown talent. There is a myth in the whole business world in Portland, but definitely in tech, that there is no diverse talent here. And that is a myth that we are disproving as Tech Town, and we're disproving it as Eli, Emerging Leaders Internship. And then there's a broader vision that Kimberly and I are both on the, I'm chairman of a broader regional effort called Greater Portland 2020, of what's a vision for the region for the year 2020. And our real, our big hairy audacious goal is to ultimately close the gap between what leadership looks like in Portland, which is, we did a survey, and it's roughly 15% people of color, and yet the population is 28% people of color. Same thing on women being 51% of the population, yet only 37% of women represent leadership. So this gap that we have, you talk about the student base coming up through the public school system is extremely diverse, which is super encouraging, yet leadership hasn't changed. So what are we going to do that? And specifically, what are we going to do about, do that, do about that in tech? So Tech Town, what I think is one of the most important messages that you can hear is that there is a lot of talk, there are panel events that you go to around equity. There are a lot of one-off things that don't really drive systemic change. Tech Town is different in that it is basically an accountability group to, on a monthly basis, hold ourselves accountable on two fronts. One, talent acquisition and making sure that we're intentional about hiring more diverse One, talent acquisition and making sure that we're intentional about hiring more diverse employees at all levels of our organization. And two, retention, which Kimberly spoke to, which is ultimately, how do we change corporate culture in Portland, and, and how do we do that in tech? And so there's a lot of systemic things that we're addressing, whether it's unconscious bias training, both at the CEO level and at the HR level, and a lot of things to ultimately result in change, whether that is, in my own company, we've gone from 10% to 25% employees of color and, and at all levels. And you'll hear from Nancy and others at AWS Elemental of that intentionality, like, turning into results.
Hello, everyone. My name is Nancy Garcia. I am the Community and Diversity Program Manager for AWS Elemental, formerly known as Elemental Technologies. I am here on my own accord, I'm not an official representative of AWS Elemental, I'm here to talk about my personal experience and my role within the organization. A little bit about AWS Elemental and its partnership with Portland Prosper, and specifically with Tech Town. It has been a longstanding partnership here. AWS Elemental started over a decade ago with three employees, and our last public record of employees was 250 employees back in 2015, before we got acquired by Amazon. We no longer disclose that information of how many employees we have, but I can say we just recently moved to the old Oregonian building and now occupy, occupy over 100,000 square feet of office space. So you can fill in the blanks there. One of the things that I really want to talk about, our growth does fulfill kind of Prosper Portland's mission to bring an economic growth and opportunity here in Portland. But it also fulfills its role of creating great neighborhoods here in Portland. So one of the things that AWS Elemental focuses on is our Community Investment Program, which is what we call our Corporate Social Responsibility Program. This past year alone, we volunteered over 2,700 hours with over 76% participation rate from our employees. One of the, we focus in four different community investment areas. That includes hunger, education, housing, and environment. And I know some of the questions that were asked previously, we, education is a big focus of ours from a volunteerism perspective, specifically with organizations that focus with STEM missions. Some of those organizations are organizations like AK Science, First Robotics, the Children's Book Bank, even the Community Cycling Center is starting a new STEM program that we're sponsoring as well. And in the past two years, we've donated over $150,000 to these organizations. From a Tech Town perspective, our partnership with Tech Town and Jared has been very instrumental. I'm not going to give you any of the data that's already been shared by Ryan or Jared, but some of the other examples that I want to share is that it's really given us the opportunity as when we were smaller, or there's various different sizes of tech companies that are part of this pledge. Not everyone can afford a headcount like AWS Elemental has to hire someone full-time to focus on diversity and inclusion. So Tech Town and the pledge really provides the opportunity for us to share resources and collaborate with one another, share best practices, and even share failures. And one of the new items that we have created as part of the Action Council is creating the resource library that anybody has access to if you've signed the Tech Town pledge. That includes not only, only articles, but we also, on our monthly meetings, also share best practices and share how these initiatives can be replicated across the other tech companies as well. Another thing that has been very useful with this partnership is the metrics that is provided. So every year, part of the pledge, it's not only about just saying we're going to be participating in this pledge, but it's actually showing the difference that we're making. And so with the third-party company that does the annual survey, all of the organizations get these metrics that probably wouldn't be able to do on their own. And it has a pretty high success, success rate in regards to participation from employees that participate in the Tech Town pledge. AWS Elemental, for example, had 76% response rate, which is, if you know anything about surveys, very high. So our employees are very invested in our participation with Tech Town and the pledge, and they're also very invested and looking forward to every year to see the progress, or not the progress, that we're doing as well. It has also introduced us to amazing programs like the Emerging Leaders Program, in which we've hired over three interns in the past two years, or programs like Summer Works, where we've hired over 10 high school students in the past three years to participate in this program. There has been many testimonies from our employees, from a recruitment perspective and a retention perspective, that the reason they were attracted to Elemental was because they saw the participation of us being part of the Diversity Pledge, or if they were already an employee, that we continue to participate and share our successes and failures as a company, as we post all of our information publicly on our website. We've already chatted a little bit about our Action Council, but I have found that to be super successful. We want to make sure that this is not all just word of mouth and, and saying that we're going to publicly do it, but the Action Council has really focused on making sure that the momentum of this pledge continues and that there is actual action that happens on a regular basis, and expectations from all the tech, tech companies that have participated in this pledge. Our efforts have definitely been seen across the city. I have personally been reached out by other tech companies or other similar companies that are interested in participating or learning more about the Diversity Pledge and what they can do to join on their own accord. Another thing that I also wanted to talk about was Prosper Portland's partnership with the 4K for Charity Fund Run. The 4K for Charity Fund Run takes place in three different locations across the world. It's a 4K run where you pay a minimum, I think, of $15 to participate, and 100% of your proceeds as a register, registrant goes to a non-for-profit. Our Portland Fund Run Series is the most successful one that we've had. In 2017, we surpassed over 1,000 registrants. In the past three years, we've donated over $175,000 to Rosemary Anderson, POISC, and Kairos PDX. And I'd like to thank Prosper Portland for sponsoring all three years that we've done this event.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for the opportunity to say a few words. I'm Teresa Jeldreks, the Chief of Staff and VP of Programs at the Technology Association of Oregon, or TAO, if you're familiar with that. So if you're not, it's a member-based organization that serves to represent the tech community here in Greater Portland, as well as Central Oregon, Southern La Valley, and Southwest Washington. TAO and Prosper Portland have worked together for many years now, prior to my tenure at TAO for about, which is about three years. The KPIs and the bullets behind what that partnership has looked like has changed every year, but over the last several years, it's focused, focused on diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts, as well as just the reach of those efforts, or the broader amplification of those efforts and not just happening within the companies themselves. As a representative of the tech industry, TAO is often the sounding board for many of our tech community organizers. We get to celebrate their successes and be a driver of addressing their challenges. Time and time again, the rapidly growing industry, like we saw up above earlier, is sharing the need for a more diverse and inclusive workforce, while our individual company efforts, the partnership, like you alluded to, partnerships, like you alluded to earlier, and work of the Tech Town Diversity Pledge plus TAO really is what helps to make this broader reach and implementation across the community really feasible. One of TAO's strengths is convening through our 80-plus events each year, which has about 6,000 attendees that we see throughout the state. As a small nonprofit, we only have nine staff, six just here in Portland, so we're not in a position to be hiring regularly, like some of our other tech companies, to say, we were able to hire, you know, 15 this quarter and 90% were diverse. So really, our reach and making impact is knowing that we have the voice and kind of the power to convene and bringing those people together. So when a company like AWS Elemental is, is hiring in leaps and bounds, we're able to share the successes and failures or learning lessons that they have to share as well. So to put a stronger voice to our work, we also released an Equity and Diversity Statement this last summer to make more publicly announce our commitment and then also to hold ourselves accountable. Again, if we don't have the numbers of hiring and things like that, it's really our voice that we have to use. And so we thought making ourselves accountable, listing out what our KPIs and what we're tracking ourselves, kind of helps others to show and share what they're doing as well. And also to show that not the same thing is going to work for every company, and that's okay. It's okay to be customized for what that diversity or inclusive efforts look like for your business and company. Meeting with Jared on the Prosper team has been, regularly has been a huge value add to this work. The value repartee we have with Jared, as well as Prosper Portland, has really assisted TAO in setting the stage for our right KPIs, which has included set mounts for connectivity with community partners. Again, that allows our companies to worry about running their business and hiring for themselves, and less, less do the grunt work of working with community partners and bringing them in. So companies like, or, you know, Youth Builders, Urban League, several others, Ironburn Team, as well as shepherding this work at our tech companies and offering diverse voices and faces on the stage and attendance for our programming, since we have that stronger voice. I've been fortunate enough to be involved in the work for almost three near, three years now and see such a great impact in such a short amount of time. It's really continuing to flourish, so I really appreciate both the financial and the sweat equity, thank you, Jared, that they've put into this work. One last piece I did want to share is just that Portland's not alone here. I know that we're the least diverse city, as you mentioned earlier, but the really awesome thing is we, TAO, our President and CEO, Skip Newberry, is also Chairman of our TECHNA Board, which is basically the Association of Associations. And so throughout US and Canada, that represents all tech companies and service providers, so all associations and councils throughout the US and Canada. And when we released that Equity and Diversity Statement, they kind of had this aha moment, and it really caught their attention because they haven't done something like this elsewhere. And they're also seeking and dealing with very similar issues. So that was really great that, A, that Skip has been involved, but that we were also able to elevate what Portland is doing. And it's a little bit of help for us, I think, knowing that we're not the only ones dealing with this issue. There is kind of, you know, it's an ongoing challenge, not just in Portland. Thank you.
Do you have questions? Comments? No? Well, I would just say, thanks very much to all of you for coming, and we greatly appreciate your collaboration with Prosper Portland and all of your great work in the industry. It's, it's really awesome to see. So, and we, it's, it's great to see all of these efforts bear fruit. So thanks very much.
Thank you. Thanks for the time.
Okay, well, unless there's something else, the January 10, 2018 Prosper Portland Board of Commissioners meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.